Hello, everyone. I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television and we're on the Rockville Campus today for Dr. Pollard's second Town Hall meeting of the fall 2013 semester. Now, Dr. Pollard is very excited about hosting today's Town Hall. I'm her sidekick today and my job is to moderate things, to take care of the details, so that Dr. Pollard can focus on you and your questions. Now, if you're watching online, you can email those questions to TownHall@MontgomeryCollege.edu and we're going to try to get to as many of those questions as we can during the hour time that we have today. Now, you can do me two favors. First of all, try to keep your questions as brief as possible. And second of all, whether you're here in the room or you're watching online, please introduce yourself before you ask your question. Now, once again, we're on the Rockville Campus. We're in the faculty-staff dining room in the campus center, so if you're nearby and you're watching online, why don't you come on over and join us? We've got plenty of room and we'd love to have you take part in the conversation right here in the room. So, without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Pollard.
Thank you so much. Well, I am delighted to be here and have this conversation yet again. Last week, last month, I did this. I wore heels and I stood up the whole time, so I modified. And although this morning, I thought Miles was going to ask me if I looked like a pilgrim because I got black and white. And it's November, so I asked all the people at the office before I walked out, "Do I look like a pilgrim today?" They said, "No, you're okay. The red shoes brushed it up." So, I'm delighted to be here because I know we have a lot of great questions that have already come in, some of them not brief. This one that Mike has on top is actually one question. So, we're going to try and modify a few of these, but a few things that I want to give a shout out to. I got the best surprise yesterday. I walked into my office after a long day and had a thank you card from the Child Care Center. And I tell you what, that was the best thing ever because it was, they all signed their names and it is about the cutest thing I've ever seen in my entire life. So, I remember how hard, whoever had to sit down and get them to do that, I thank you all because I was really grateful to have had that. Want to give a big shout out to some of our athletic teams who are doing outstanding work right now. We have men's soccer and women's volleyball that are both advancing to nationals. That is... And what I understand, our women's soccer missed it by just a hair going there as well. So, I am delighted and look forward to seeing the work that they're going to be doing that. And as one of the things to keep in mind, have you all seen it? It's coming, it's coming, it's coming. November 19th, we're going to be unveiling the new Raptor mascot. It's going to be here at the Rockville Campus. At the campus center at 2:30, it's going to be free food, giveaways, music by Hot 99.5 and raffle tickets to the Jingle Ball. And then, we're going to go over to the gym and have the big mascot revealed. Then, we have our men's and women's doubleheader that day, food giveaways and a chance to win some awesome prizes. And from what I understand, our basketball team is going to be fierce this year. The women, I got my, I'm excited about that. They got me so pumped, I went and bought Caesar's tickets to the Mystics now. So, come, I'm like all into women's basketball, so very happy, looking forward to that. Just a couple of things to point out as well. You know, the registration right now for winter is open. Registration for fall starts on November 18th, so please make sure that we're helping our students think about getting in sooner rather than later. Important for us to be thinking about retention in that regard. You'll be seeing an announcement that'll be coming out from our facilities folks regarding the East Garage at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, so please make sure that you see that. Those of you who are concerned about parking, particularly at our remote locations from today, that'll be coming out to kind of give you an update. Plenty of parking. We're continuing the progress, but just making sure people know what's happening. And then, last but not least, November, this season is actually one of my favorite seasons of the year. I know a lot of people think about the holidays, but for me, October is my anniversary and then November is both Robin and I's birthday. Actually, my birthday's tomorrow. Yeah, so Miles, Miles is taking, he told me that he's taking me to see Thor for my birthday. So, we're going to go see Thor for my birthday. I think for Robin's birthday, we went to Dave and Buster's. So, it's just, I find it so interesting. He's taking us for our birthday. But my favorite holiday is Thanksgiving. And we, and our family, Thanksgiving means a lot and we spend a lot of time thinking about how we are grateful for what's happened. So, I'm grateful to each of you for the work you do each and every day. And then, more importantly, grateful to our students who allow us to be in their lives. So, very excited about it. We're going to move forward and I'll turn it over to you for the first question.
All right. Our first question is this gentleman right here.
Good morning, Dr. Pollard.
Good morning, you too.
I'm Athul Roy and I've been teaching full-time here for 15 years and have been full-time in this higher education industry for 37 years. And so, first of all, congratulations on expanding us into China, Ethiopia, and India. And again, congratulations on having successfully given us this opportunity to speak to you directly.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. So, my question is coming.
It's a hard question, right? That's what I heard.
Ah, no. It could be mean, but not hard.
Okay. There's a difference between the two, but I appreciate your honesty. Go ahead.
No, no. So, first of all, I want to assure you, I'm not a Tea Party member, nor a communist, not a communist. But my question comes from this red book. First of all, you know, as a consequence of Affordable Care, Health Care Act, 30 people lost our jobs as full-time temps a few months ago, you know, and my wife was one of them, so that didn't help. But anyways, coming back to this red book, our deductibles are going up. Let me get the numbers. You know, 1750, 5,250 individual family is straight to 2,500 slash 6,500. And I know there are reasons. I myself am getting older and heavier, so, but, but the thing is that, you know, this doesn't help. So, I mean, my question is this, that is, see, for me, this is a great place to work. I love working here. No other place on the planet that I can find for myself, but that will be an stuck employee. But I'm saying that with these figures, what would you say to the talented employee, sorry, prospective employee pool who might be looking at us as destination employer? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Athul. God love you. If that's the meanest question I get today, then I'm doing okay. I love the spirit in which you asked. The first part of your question, I would love to unpack a little bit because the issue regarding temporary employees who are no longer able to serve in temporary capacity is not as a result of the ACA. So, let's, I want to be very clear about that because there are lots of conversations going on now about the impact of the ACA on contingent or temporary employees, but that's not the reason why we did that. This is actually a regulatory issue because of the IRS. We have, the IRS gives us a certain number of hours and a certain number of years, for lack of a better word, in which temporary employees can work for an organization. And if those temporary employees continue beyond that, we then have severe penalties as a result of that. The college, as a time period for many years, because we were not getting new positions, we did something that many folks in higher ed have done. We hired temporary people. And we had, matter of fact, we hired so many temporary people here at Montgomery College that continued for years that some of them didn't know they were temporary, right? Some of them thought that they were full-time employees in many different roles and were very excited about that until we had to notify them that there was a change in wage and labor regulations from the IRS. It's not related to ACA. Now, there will be conversations that have to go on about the ACA as it relates to other contingent employees, that particularly being part-time faculty. And this is a national conversation that's going on right now, those of you who follow those trade papers. Second part of your question, or I guess that was the premise for your question, healthcare costs are astronomical. I have no doubt about that. We do have a committee that is composed of employee groups that come together, representatives to look at that. We figure out how to best contain our costs, what are the strategies in which we can think about what benefits to add, what benefits not to add, can we pool with somebody? But you made a very important point. We are an aging population at the college that always takes healthcare costs up. We're in a very expensive part of the country when it comes to healthcare costs and right now, we have a self-funded plan. So, one of the conversations that we're having, oh, come on in, don't duck, just walk in. One of the questions that we have to have as a college community is, are there opportunities for us to pool with the county in some ways that may help? We have been very, been, our healthcare costs, we've been able to contain them based on some things that we've put in place within the institution. We would know that there are some challenges based on some, what other folks in the county are doing and therefore, there are impacts on that as well. I do know it's an issue that we have to think about and I think you're exactly right. A lot of people, besides healthcare costs, just the cost of living in this region, housing, you can hardly find affordable housing. I am struck by the number of employees who are in the age range of 25 to 35 who do not live in Montgomery County. And this simply because they have inability to find affordable housing at the salaries that we pay. So, for me, we are looking at this issue much holistically. The destination employer, the common employee experience is looking at this. How do we provide compensation and benefits that are marketable, that at the same time allow us as a public institution? Because there are also penalties if we start adding Cadillac plans, I think they're called, right? So, there are also penalties that happen within the institution if that occurs. But if you have ideas about how we can improve that, I'm happy to hear them. And I know the committee that works, there's a committee of faculty, staff, and administrators working with H-R-E-D to come together and they look at these on an annual basis. And we have a consultant, our healthcare consultant, come in and say, "Okay, you can tweak this, you can do this, up this deductible, do this." I personally have the one with the highest deductible and it's a very expensive plan, but it's very important because I think it also creates some consciousness on me about how I decide to use my healthcare and how I think about that. But I don't disagree with your concern, healthcare costs. And I'm hopeful that maybe after a couple of years of ACA, we might actually see some decrease in healthcare costs, but I don't know that. And the other problem is that we are people business, unlike a lot of places where we have other costs that can help maybe defray. We're people business. Our payroll, roughly 80% of our college operating budget is people. And that's a lot. Thank you, Athul.
Okay, we have another question here in the room?
Yes.
My name is Julie Pretty and actually, it's some accolades for Montgomery College. As maybe some of you know or don't know, our construction management group sent a team out to Las Vegas, I guess you know.
Yes, I know.
And Mario Parkin, who is the department chair. And the team consisted of Chris Karen, Chad Orsler, Dwight Heidel, Sev Henry, and James Glass. It was a national competition in Las Vegas. The, we were the, part of the Associated Builders Student Chapter and we actually made it to the finals, the only community college that did. And they came in second in quality and control and third in construction management, so we placed ahead of some of the top four-year colleges in the nation. And Griselle wanted to add just a couple.
My name is Griselle Munoz and I am the president of the Student Construction Association for this year. I'm proud to say that we are affiliated with the Associated Builders and Contractors of Metropolitan DC and they have well over donated, funded 13 scholarships to 13 construction management students for over $35,000 this year alone. And we continue to help them and they as well, help us a lot. So, we are actually making an event at the end of the semester to bring all those people back that did help us and just to appreciate, give them our appreciation for everything they did.
Oh, that is so, thank you for sharing that. Congratulations. I read that and I think that's outstanding. It's interesting, I just did a blog post about this, that our students, when they go off to national competitions, they are shining and beating folks who are supposed to be doing this work at four-year levels. Our students are coming in just shining, so I thank you for sharing that. If you send me a date, I'll try and stop by. I may not be able to stay for the whole thing, but I'll try and stop by. And I think, I love the fact that you're expressing gratitude to those folks who are helping you. Congratulations. Welcome. Yes, sir?
Okay, we have an online question.
Okay.
This comes from Jill Kronstadt, who's the Associate Professor of English and Germantown. She has a long question, but I'm going to distill it in the interest of time. Currently Banner flags students for academic alert based on GPA. Developmental students are most vulnerable and least likely to complete are not flagged until they've taken 12 or more credit courses at MC. So, here's the question. Can't we at least program Banner to flag students who have struggled in even one developmental course so we don't have to wait until several semesters later until they've failed enough credit courses?
First of all, I thank Jill for the question because we all know what the literature tells us about developmental education and we know those students oftentimes are the ones, if they can't get out of developmental courses, they very well may not succeed in college-level courses and will discontinue. The other thing I think is important about her question is that, what should be the premise by which we make decisions in terms of advising and counseling and helping students matriculate? That question can't be based on what the system can or cannot do. It has to be based on a comprehensive approach to how we look at advising students. So, I happen to know, and those of you who haven't attended one of the phenomenal sessions that Monica and her team does on Starfish, I would encourage you to do that because one of the things is in our new developmental advising model, they're looking at many different factors in terms of helping students understand success, how to flag them in different types of things, how to integrate very clearly into their life, intrude, if I can say, into their life, how to connect them with resources within the institution and to be very thoughtful about making sure the student's progress. The other thing is important is that SB 740 or the CCRCCA, are you proud of me? I got that? They, there are certain requirements that we have to meet as an institution regarding students' matriculation. So, the question that you posed, Jill, which is a phenomenal one, I think there are several forces that are coming to effect right now that will change that. I don't know, Monica, I have to put you on the spot, but is there going to be this type of flag as a part of the developmental process?
Not initially and not right away. Banner still won't allow us to flag students. However, in 2014, there will be a mechanism in Banner that will allow us to flag students, developmental students, and all other students. And we're looking at early alert measures as part of the developmental advising model.
Thank you. Banner XE, is that what we're waiting?
XB.
XB, as in boy. That will come into effect and it will allow us to have the programming that we can do to do that. But I think going to Jill's question, which I think is, there's a new advising model we're putting in place and it's important for us to get all of those steps in place and not just simply look at Banner as a solution. We want to put all of those steps in place because it does some good to flag the students if we don't know who's going to contact them and we don't know what support services to connect them to. So, we're putting that all in place. Jill, I thank you for the question and thank you. I saw that she had a long explanation about it and I completely get it. Having taught developmental education and English and reading for several years, I know exactly what you mean. So, thank you.
All right, our next question is right here.
Good morning, Dr. Pollard.
Hello.
Amy Crowley from Academic Initiatives. The college has dedicated a great deal of space for the Welcome Center and the South Campus Instructional Building, creating Room 101 and they also have Room 112. Those of us who work in the building are well aware that the space is underutilized and we're not seeing students, large number of students being served. Currently, there's no longer any meeting space in the building and more importantly, there is no space for students to hang out. If you come into the building during the day, you will see students sitting on the floor lining the hallways. So, my question is, would the college consider taking some of the space in 101, the large room, and putting in seating the way it is in Germantown so that students can sit between classes, meet, have plugs, outlets for them to charge their devices, and also advertise the PCs that are in there so students can use the PCs? Thank you.
I see no reason why not to your question, Amy. Thank you for asking. There's several interesting parts about your question. One is that we have a space deficit significantly across the institution. This campus in particular, we know is already, is not only landlocked, but it is a campus that has the most number of students on it and we don't have enough space. This has been an ongoing issue as a part of the master plan for the Rockville Campus. I will also suggest to you, this has also been a very big issue that the folks who worked in the Common Student Experience Group talked about, how do we create spaces for that? So, I think that's a very good point. I'm very happy to, Steve, if we can talk to Karen Roseberry and the folks who respond for the Welcome Centers, I see no reason why we shouldn't do that. Those centers are very busy up front and then during the academic year, they actually slowed down quite a bit. I suspect they'll pick up some more in terms of fall registration, but it doesn't mean we couldn't have space in it. I was in there, or a couple of weeks ago in the afternoon, and you're right, it's very empty, students aren't there, they pop in. So, I think it's a very good idea to figure out how to create flexible spaces so that we can use them. But I also know that facilities and IT are actually in the process right now of putting charging stations and they're investigating how to create those on the campus. That's a part of our facilities, capital improvement plan and IT has it part of their IT plan because, and the other thing is since the parking lots, I know that's a big issue. How do we get Wi-Fi experience in the parking lots? A lot of students go there during classes or in between and wait, so we're trying to figure that out. And then, how do we in general, which I think is an interesting point, create a more student-friendly campus? I am struck by the fact that you go into certain parts of our campus, as you described, students are sitting on a floor, they're leaning up against the wall, they're hanging over the railing, every once in a while, you want to pull them back. And they're doing that because we don't have enough space. I'm hopeful when we get the new student services built on this campus, that it helps alleviate some of that, but we'll still be in a space deficit. So, we, we have some significant issues in that regard and if we can use flexible spaces and kind of swing them in and out, I think that makes good sense. So, I talked with Karen Roseberry about that. Karen, and what's, Karen, who's in charge of, Director of, it's another, Amy, thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, we have another question right here.
All right.
Hi, Dr. Pollard.
Hello.
My name is Dean Schleicher and I'm the Articulation and Transfer Specialist.
Yes, you are, and I sign a lot of paper for you.
You do. Which part of the College and Career Readiness and College Completion Act, otherwise known as SB 740, do you envision having the largest impact on Montgomery College?
Hmm, thank you, Dean. Well, one of the things I think is going to be interesting, the fact that a student has to have a pathway articulated. I think that's going to be one of the most significant ones that we have as an organization because that means we have to put the infrastructure in place, which is with the whole developmental advising model, is about how do you create a sustainable pathway, the student knows it from the moment they walk in, and then be able to articulate that throughout their collegiate experience. I think that's a really big opportunity, but it also is a challenge. The second one that I think is probably most challenging, if I'm correct, the legislation says that after a student completes a developmental class, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, they must immediately go into a credit-bearing class. Now, the idea of how we can make somebody do something, Dean, is a challenge. I think oftentimes too, sometimes our students, if I've gone through, and I'll just say this because I saw Tool grading earlier, if you have, you had to do some work in developmental math and you get through that sequence, I can probably tell you the last thing you're thinking about is getting into another math class. But the reality is, the literature tells us they should. So, how do we impress upon students the need for that and how do we look at coordination of schedules across campuses so that can occur? I think that's going to be a significant challenge for us. Those are two off the top of my head, but thank you for the question, Dean.
All right, next question is an online question. It's from a student who didn't sign his name.
Uh-oh.
So, they broke rule number one.
Y'all let me know, yeah, y'all let me know if we should answer it or not. Y'all know I don't like nameless questions.
It's a good question, though.
Oh.
Dr. Pollard, you recently wrote a post titled, "Ending Hunger in Our Communities: The Community College Role." In this article, you discuss the need for Montgomery College to take part in the Food Recovery Network for the students that attend MC and the surrounding community. You also say, "As a college, we understand that the food that fuels bodies also fuels minds." Along with the lack of food distribution, there have been, there have been issues with food desserts. Not sure what that means. "Can you address the importance of quality of food provided to the students and community and how this relates to your presidential priorities to improve the bookstore and food service operations to meet the student need?"
Wow, that's a very engaged student, one. They read a few things, but I will answer because I do think there are some important points to be made in that. The number one issue that I hear from students after parking is concerns about food service. And with that, we know that we took that very deliberately this year. In fact, Kathy, Carrie Fletcher, and all of our folks who run auxiliary services and AFS really worked a lot in terms of crafting, won a new RFP that went out for our food services program, but then very deliberately sat down and had thoughtful conversations about the people of the group that was the finalists, about what the needs are of our students. How do we look at crafting healthy options for our students, cost containment strategies, variety, all the things that are important to students? And actually, employees. I'll eat here today before I leave. So, there is an important part about how we think differently about what those processes are. How can we make sure the students can actually afford to eat? I was struck, I happened to be at the Tacoma Park Campus a couple of weeks ago and thought I grabbed lunch and next thing I know, I got a salad, I got some iced tea, I got some fruit, I picked up a cookie. And next thing you know, it was $10. And I said, "What?" You know, and I stopped myself because I think I was going to go back for something else, but I was like, wow! You know, and I thought, if a student did this every day, $50 for a week is a lot for most of our students to be able to live on and maybe be able to do. So, I think we have to talk, but on the other hand, it's a business, right? So, we can't expect our food service provider to then not make any money on the work that they do. So, there's a very delicate balance about how you meet needs and expectations and also how you allow a business to be able to generate enough revenue to allow them to stay in the business. If, I would tell you, one of the challenges for us is that we are dispersed, we have three campuses, so my understanding is a lot of time, food vendors don't even want to apply to come into our vending areas because we have also a lot of competition in terms of our student bar area here. We have our own munchies area, so they don't have, what's the word they call it? They don't have full control of the entire food services program. So, that creates a little bit of challenge. Plus, we have three campuses, so how does that play itself out? So, it's a very complex issue, but I think it's one we have to be very thoughtful about. Poverty in this country is significant. It is growing in Montgomery County. In fact, between 2007 and 2010, the county, those who live in poverty, according to the federal poverty standards, rose by 33% in Montgomery County. So, it's not just something, and y'all know a lot of them are our students. So, I have to think about how that plays itself out. Very important issue and we're working on that. Kathy, you want to say something?
Yes, I would just like to add that while you can spend $10 on your laundry and it's easy to do that.
Yeah, that was me that day.
Especially with the, you know, new choices we have.
Yes.
One of the things that's important to remember is that we have a, we have a $3 breakfast, we have a $5 lunch available, complete meal, and we also now have a $6 dinner. So, if you choose those meals specifically, you can, you can leave the cafeteria without spending the $10.
Yes.
And we also have other new choices. We have vegan meals now, we have more vegetarian choices and...
The salad bar I love.
And the salad bar at Rockville and Tacoma Park. We also, you'll be interested to know, have nutritional labels on all of the grab and goes, so if you want to find out how many calories or, you know...
On my cookie?
Yeah, yeah. Don't look at it on a cookie.
Yeah, don't look at it.
But those options are now available in this new contract.
Very good.
So, you know, if you had an experience in the cafeteria prior to July 1, we hope that was not positive or too expensive, please visit the cafeterias on all three campuses again. And you may find something that's more affordable and also more to your nutritional needs.
That's a great, and I, mind you, I wasn't complaining because I, I made the choices I made. I could have had, as you suggest, I always call them the value meal option, right? But I made a different choice and that cookie was good, just for the record. So, thank you all very much. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, we have another question from the room?
Hi, Dr. Pollard. I'm Carol Ronrude. I'm the Executive Director of the Foundation. And I'd like to ask you about the, you entered into a partnership with the Montgomery County Public Schools and USG to help those underrepresented in, in college have a pathway to college through Montgomery College and then on to USG, the Achieving Excellence Success, College Success Program. Could you give us an update about how that is going now that we've been in the schools and how many schools we're in and just a little about that program?
Awesome. Thank you very much, Carol. I'm very excited about this program because ACES is doing something that all of us know is important. We're actually going into the high schools and working with students who traditionally have been underrepresented in higher education. Right now, we are in 10 high schools this year. Right now, we are in 10 high schools this year. Nearly 1,000 students, if I'm correct, are enrolled in the ACES program, and we have coaches in each of those high schools and working very deliberately, not only with the students, but their families, to talk about college-going and to help them understand what that pathway can be from college, excuse me, from their high school to Montgomery College and then to USG. This program is geared toward traditional ethnic groups who are underrepresented, first-generation students who are, would be considered living in poverty, students who have academic or other challenges, and very thoughtfully designed, that we're really intrusive, and working in partnership with the high school personnel. I think that's an important thing. And then when the students come to Montgomery College, in addition to all the support surfaces we have, how we have coaches that can help them navigate the system as well here. And many of you know, this is a very personal thing for me. I've talked about this in several places because I know this program is designed for people who don't know how to have conversations at home about college, or whose family may say, "I want you to go to college," but they don't have a clue about how to get you there, or more importantly, how to navigate the systems of college. Those of us who do, we think, you know, I go around sometimes, we start dropping all of our acronyms and phrases and systems. People are like, "Well, what the heck are you talking about?" And they're intimidated by that. This is really to demystify that and give people access to education in really thoughtful ways. So, thank you, Carol, for the question. Very excited. We're going to have, I have an update about ACES, as a matter of fact, on Friday from the, this is a high-profile program as well. The county invested resources into it, as well as the colleges' resources, so we're very thoughtful about how it's progressing. Thank you.
We have a question right here.
Oh, I'm liking the tie and shirt pattern thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Mafos Cedric, a member of the Student Council.
Hello.
Hi, we had an ongoing debate because we were talking about the book prices. Then, we're trying to institute a book exchange in the college, like between student and student, instead of having, going to the bookstore. So, I wanted to ask you, like, according to you, how, how much resource do we have in order to, like, infiltrate that into the system rather than just creating a club with the students, actually making it like a system, like, let's say, financial aid office, actually a book department in the school? Like, how much resources do we have, and if that's possible, could we do that?
Yeah. One of the things I'm going to ask you to do, because there has been a lot of work done right now to look at textbook affordability, and we not only have had state law that required us to do that, we also have had a group of college employees that have worked deliberately on that. So, we do have opportunities for book rental, we have opportunities for loaners in different places, and we work very hard on that. That being said, textbooks are expensive, and we have very little control over that. And right now, because the market is opening up, you can purchase books from our bookstores, but you can also go online in many cases and purchase them, and we have to provide that data to those vendors so they can make that available. There's a, the control factor is somewhat problematic. But in terms of the program that you're suggesting, I'm going to ask you to work with, you're on this campus, work with Deborah, Dr. Deborah, who can connect you with the bookstore team, the manager, to talk about what the process would be to institutionalize it, if it's possible or not. There may be some limitations that I'm unaware of right now based on our contract with different vendors and our contract with other folk, the publishers, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation, and I applaud the students for trying to figure out how to be entrepreneurial to solve those types of problems. Thank you. Dr. Bright, if you do know Dr. Bright, I'm sure. All right, thank you.
Okay, we have an online question. This is from Becky Rosansky.
Okay.
And she wants to know, "When will we get an updated.edu website? The current website is confusing and hard to navigate." Exclamation point.
The, you mean, when she says "dot" you mean the entire college's website? Yeah, we have a, actually, I, Beth, I'm going to have to turn it over to you. I know Dave is working, has a group that's going to be working on this, but I think as a part of the communications, can you talk about this?
We did, sorry.
Thank you.
So, as some of you may have known, or you participated, and we did a communications audit where we did a series of focus groups around the college to find out how we're doing with internal communications, also external communications. A number of faculty, staff, students participated. We're going to, the start of the January, February, we're going to actually do some additional surveys to get at additional information we're looking for. And that's going to help us form the basis of where we want to head with the website because it's, it's great to, we hear that feedback, believe me, about things need to be improved, but we need to know what we're working toward to ensure that when we do have a new website, it's going to work well for everyone. So, believe me, we hear it, we want to make those improvements, but it is going to take some elbow grease, and we want to make sure that we have the research to back it up. But we also are doing some, IT and communications are doing some work at looking at the issue of content management, content strategy, and the idea of, we need to make sure that the content is rich and good on our website. So, it's not just a matter of make it look pretty and make sure it's easier to navigate, it's also to make sure that the content we have on the site is of value to our students, our faculty, our staff, and our prospective students.
I think the other thing, who else, was it Becky, did you say her name was?
Becky Rosansky.
Yeah, Becky. The other thing I would say, Becky, is that we also have to have a substantive conversation about the purpose of our website, also the purpose of our intranet or portal. I think that there is a challenge right here, that the dissonance occurs, I think, in terms of what and how we use a website, and what and how, what for, and how do we use a portal, and how do we make sure they're complementary but have distinct purposes? I happened to, a couple of weeks ago, worked in the Response Center, which, okay, if y'all haven't done that, good God. I was literally overwhelmed in that moment. But the amount of information, you know, but they use the college's website so much to get information. Literally type it in, bam, here it is. So, is that the place where we want that information? Is it, should be on a portal, or is it the website? So, is it an informational purpose? Is it a marketing purpose? There's lots of things we have to think about with the website, and I really appreciate Becky for asking the question, and I'm hopeful we'll start to see some plans. We don't just want to start changing it without knowing how we're going to change it, and that's something I'm trying to make sure we do.
Okay. Next question is an online question. It's from Deborah Posey.
Okay.
Director of the School of Education at Rockville. "As you no doubt realize, full-time faculty at Montgomery College are feeling disrespected and frustrated with the increasing lack of voice we perceive under your administration. Do you have any plans to reach out and improve the situation in the coming year, or should faculty simply assume that our professional options are not, opinions, I'm sorry, are not welcome outside the confines of our classrooms?"
Wow, so that was a question right there, too. What I would tell, first of all, I want to tell Deb, I'm sorry you feel that way. It is never my intention to have any employee group, faculty, full or part-time, staff, bargaining non, students, full or part-time, administrators, to feel that they, they're not respected, their voice isn't valued. What concerns me, though, about that is that, I'm not quite sure if I agree with the premise of the question. I think it started, she started off the question, if I'm correct, Mike, by saying, "As I no doubt know," because there's a certain amount of schizophrenia that's occurring right now that I see within the organization. In fact, for every message that I receive about Deb's experience and speaking very thoughtfully about that, I will receive, I just actually got an email the other day from a faculty member who said to me, "This is the most excited I've thought about my discipline. I'm very excited about the academic reorganization." Literally said that, it was a gentleman, and he said, "I know you're going to get a lot of feedback about this, but keep it moving." Now, there's this kind of interesting part about that, and I hear that type of commentary, then I hear a commentary, such as the one that Deb posed, and I'm struck by that, how to balance that in a way that allows us to be very thoughtful about the fact that things are changing. I get that. And I also recognize the fact that roles might be changing and understandings might be changing. But I don't necessarily know, in terms of her question, that full-time faculty voices are being silenced. I'm very deliberate in trying to make sure that if a faculty member, full or part-time, wants to have a conversation with me, we have those conversations, that we have a governance system that's vibrant and allows for that, both in terms of faculty councils, we have the campus-based faculty senates, we have the various faculty serving multiple constituency councils across the institution. So, I don't know how I feel about that. I would argue and offer very clear, as I've said in many places, there's a difference in terms of how that communication is flowing. There is a governance system, and then there is also other mechanisms for faculty to engage, and I welcome the opportunity to hear how that can be improved. I had a couple of faculty in my office last week, and it was very interesting to have the conversations because one said to me, in a very similar thread, "Here's some concerns I have," and then went and talked about certain issues. And as we started to unpack the issue, it was very interesting that there were very different perspectives about what happened. There is the perspective of this person based on what they saw and heard, and then the perspective of me as someone who saw and heard different things as well, and how that played itself out. But I did have a meeting, was it just this week, yesterday, or I'm losing track of the days, this day is Thursday? So, Tuesday morning, I had a meeting with the leadership of each of the unions, AAUP, ABSME, and SEIU. And a similar thread was brought up by President Wilson, Dan Wilson, and I said to him, I said, "So, here's what I'm going to ask you to do." Most times when people come to me with a challenge or concern, I ask them, "Give me a solution," because in the back of their heads, people already start thinking about the solution. So, I said to him, "I would welcome the opportunity for you to bring to me three or four ideas about ways in which faculty can feel, as Deb suggested, more engaged in decision-making or whatever the case may be, and then let's sit down and have a conversation about that." Because I have, I have yet to understand how that is not happening. I spend an inordinate amount of time having lots of conversations with people. A couple of weeks ago, I sat down with, had a great conversation. I really admire their leadership, the council, Faculty Council Chair, met also with the Union President at that time, to talk about issues. I think they came to me with three issues. As a matter of fact, how did I call it, Sharon? Three gets. And I said, "Here are your three gets, not a problem. Let's figure out how to make it happen," and I think we've done that. So, for me, I'm trying to understand more what that is. Does it mean that things have changed in a way that people are trying to figure out and navigate a new system? No doubt. Have the people changed? The people have changed, have no doubt about that. But the question for me is to figure out, give me some solutions and ways that can show me where those, that voice is there. And I have been and will continue to reach out in ways that I can, in many ways as I can. The irony about that, as I sat at the table and had this conversation with the union leaders, I told Dan, "I hear what you're saying." I said, "But the irony is I get these emails from people who tell me very different things." I said, "And then I look at part-time faculty who, for many years, have described a completely disengaged, disvalued experience at the college, and they say, 'Yeah, are we in Nirvana?' No. Are we making progress? Yes," they described that. I turned to Liz, who represents ABSME, and I said, "Do you feel the same way?" She was bringing to me problems about the performance evaluation. We talked about that, but then she said, "But we're making progress in some areas," and had brought legitimate concerns that can be addressed. So, Deb, I welcome that. If you want to sit down and have a conversation with me, I welcome that because I need to understand. And I'm sorry that she feels that way, that's been her experience, but I certainly welcome the opportunity to hear her thoughts.
Very good. We have another question from online. This is from Nick Sushka, who is the Service Learning Coordinator at the Rockville Office of Student Life. And her question is, "Montgomery College's service learning program, coordinated through student life on all three campuses, engage over 2,000 students each year with over 50 community partners and dozens of service learning faculty through projects and courses, co-curricular leadership development opportunities, and high-impact programs like Alternative Breaks. Where do you see academic and co-curricular service learning fitting into MC's community engagement initiatives and the academic restructuring?"
I don't know how, but I know that they should. This is, the college is a member of the Maryland-DC Campus Compact that looks at how you look at civic engagement and be very thoughtful about how you produce citizens who step into a role of being engaged and active members of society, and a lot of that comes through service learning. And I also think there are ways in which we can be more thoughtful and engaging people on that. You know, I think, I've worked at an organization where the faculty and students in the HVAC program would go out and do heat tests, furnace checks, before the cold season started. It was a very important learning moment for them, but it also was a great service. They did this in communities, particularly seniors and people who are in public housing. Very thoughtful experience to get that opportunity to engage with a customer or client, but also to give that service back. I know that we do a lot of that right now. I saw the announcement for the, there was a fair that was done at the school here in Rockville, a health fair. I thought that was phenomenal because here's a great way of having students be experts, but at the same time, be very thoughtful about the ways in which they are communicating their expertise to students and helping young children feel more valued and knowledgeable about their own health experience. And we have lots of pockets of that, but I think what's interesting to me about it is that I don't know how we have consolidated our knowledge about them. And I think that is what maybe the restructuring can help us do, and what in community engagement can help us do, to figure out how we publicize what's happening, how we organize it in a way that people understand it, and then create other opportunities. There's not a day, I just, as a matter of fact, I had the K-Center for Adoption Support and Education meet with me this morning at 9:00, and they wanted to talk about, is there a way to do some work regarding adoption, education, and awareness? Could the college work with them to do another portraits of life on adoptive families in Montgomery County to raise awareness? And that is a combination of students do the write-ups, faculty and students do the photos, and I thought, what a great idea. And I think, so I said, "Oh, I'll talk to other folks who've done that and see." So, there are opportunities for that, we should be very thoughtful about how we let people know that we do a lot of that already.
All right, we have a question here in the room.
Hi, Dr. Pollard. My name is James Wong. I'm a student here, and all I can say is, ever since I first attended this campus, I love the campus community. And I just want to say, I was a student that represented the summer alternative break when we went up to Union Beach to help with the shore relief, and that was a great experience. And all I can say is, it really changed my perspective on everything, and it's allowed me to build a better relationship with, with other students and my other professors. And I just want to let you know that, like, we should continue this, and I also apply again for this winter. So, and I'm hoping to be a reflection leader for this trip. Thank you.
See, James, I couldn't even pay for that. So, the best part of my job, without a doubt, is the opportunity to talk to students and hear about those things, and to hear how their experience at this college is literally changing their life, they're building confidence. Yesterday, I spent time at the Germantown Campus in their leadership, student leader seminar, and I spent an hour with them talking about leadership, and they had phenomenal questions about learning style, leadership styles and challenges, the joys of leadership and the, you know, the hard questions you have to answer as a leader. How do you build consensus? It was, I was so struck by the number of folks who, and they got leadership in a very, but to see them literally growing over the course of a semester. So, thank you, James, for sharing that experience.
We have a question online. This is from a student, the editor of the Excalibur.
Okay.
All right. He says, "First, I would like to apologize in advance if I'm asking inappropriate questions."
Oh, that's so sweet.
I don't think it is, though.
All right, thank God.
I want to ask you a question about AELP Institutional Credit Announcement.
Oh, boy.
The college decided that AELP courses will no longer earn institutional credit and will not be calculated into a student's GPA starting fall 2013. We even published this announcement in the newspaper, but since then, many fellows have been asking me why this privilege is given only to new students. Most of them say that their AELP grades affect their GPA significantly, and when they try to transfer, the presence of the AELP courses in their transcript makes them lose in the high competition of the four-year school admission process. What should I say or answer when they ask me questions like these?
Well, you know, it's interesting, I was thinking about, you have those leadership moments, and you think about things that are challenging. Kind of going even to Deb's question earlier, this undoubtedly is probably one of those examples that she would cite about faculty voice and faculty decision-making, and this is a very hard one. This is a group of students who came to us, and this is, there are certain fights I pick. This was not one I picked. This was a group of students who, over several semesters, made a very strong case about the role of those credits in their GPA and also their ability when they're transferring to other institutions, how it was negatively impacting them. And the college went through a study, actually a multi-year study, many studies that were done, and had some phenomenal people who participated in that. And ultimately, I accepted a recommendation and made the decision, so let's be very clear, I made the decision that we would no longer accept AELP for institutional credit, and those will not adversely affect students' GPA. However, you don't have the ability to go back and do that. You have the opportunity to set a date from this point forward because at that particular point, the student is, there's a new catalog that goes into effect, and that student is in that catalog, and it goes forward. So, we can't go back and do that. What I would advise those students when they're transferring, it might be very useful for them to talk to their advisor here at the institution, and maybe there's some supplement, a letter that might be able to be attached to say the college going forward, and maybe this is something I can talk with Monica, I keep looking at you because you're right here, and I'm thinking of advising, if there's something that we might be able to say for those students, you know, starting with the catalog fall of 2013, institutional credit will no longer be offered. Don, we need to have a conversation about this and figure out how we can help students have that as a part of their description when they go forward. But I think what I would tell the editor of the student paper is to rephrase this. Students express a concern, the college studied it, we made a decision on it, and they have made a positive effect on students who are coming in future years. But we can't go back and change what's happened because that credit is already on their transcript. They already have a transcript that the college has to honor.
All right, we have another online question. This comes from Dr. John McLaughlin, a part-time professor of English at Germantown. "I would like to thank the president for her continued support of part-time faculty research, including grant funds to support travel involving research. Will there be available funds to assist part-time faculty who would like to accompany Professor Malveaux and students to Cuba this coming January?"
Probably not. I don't know that and I have to talk to Don and see if there's some mechanism. I would think probably not. That is going to be a trip that exceeds any financial commitments that we've already made to adjunct and full-time and staff for that matter. We'd probably not be able to do that. I don't, I'll say probably, but I say probably not in a very deliberative manner. But I'm excited and I certainly hope that this particular person takes advantage of it. The other thing that I think is important about that question, because I ruminate on these things along the way, every time, and I think if you look at the history of this country, actually maybe the history of the world, when some folks gain greater access to the political structure, gain greater access to the resources of a structure, there are always going to be consequences for that. And there are always going to be perceptions about who gets in and who doesn't get in, who gets some and who's not getting some. And at the end of the day, if I give you a piece of the pie, does that mean I'm getting a little bit lesser piece of the pie? And what's the impact on me? And I think we have to, there, part of what we are experiencing right now within our organization is this very shifting culture. One of the things I said to Dan and Bill when I met with them and Liz, who was in the room earlier this week, is I think that there needs, somebody needs to hold a forum on what are faculty roles for 2020. And when I say that, I say it not, and I said, "Not talk about it about Montgomery College. Don't talk about it about the state of Maryland. Don't talk about 2015, 2014. Push it out because otherwise we personalize it and it's too hard to have the conversations." But those roles are changing. Last night, I had the opportunity, and I don't know how I got invited, but the Gates Foundation and the National Journal held a thought leader discussion on the achievement gap and workforce development. And today, they're doing a wholesome posing, if you get the National Journal, on the next America. And in this conversation, it was fascinating, they had all these different models of education playing for it. But here's a Gates Foundation guy sitting next to me, right? And the conversation that we started having, he said, and we said, "What is going to be the role of faculty in the future? Will there be a distinction between full and part-time faculty? What will that look like? How will you start to have conversations about advising? How will you have conversations about those students who are at risk?" I, and I told this to Dan and Bill, I said, "I'm not going to start the conversations." Y'all know what to be said, Darian got an agenda, Darian is trying to, I want us to have the dialogue. Because I think at the basis of Deb's question earlier, this question that came in from, who is this, the part-time faculty member?
John McLaughlin.
John McLaughlin. And other questions we've had, we are in the midst of a shifting reality right now. And it's shifting so fast that we can't even get our hand on it. We're trying to figure out what that looks like. And in that, it creates discomfort. My last example on that, it relates to what's happening right now with our board, our Board of Trustees. I told somebody I had an epiphany the other day, maybe it was Sharon, I even told you in China when we were there. I said, "You know, I grew up in an environment where change was constant, it was a part of what I do, how I do." As a matter of fact, I always get a little uncomfortable when things stay the same for too long because I am trying to figure out what that actually looks like. But what happened in this is that now, and Steve and I were talking about this morning, our board is changing significantly. And that's, we have a board chairman who had been on there since I started. He's no longer, not a chairman, he's not even on the board anymore. We have new members who started within the last six years and we have one member who's right now a holdover from, into the second term. Different reality, very different reality. And I'm trying to figure out, how do I navigate this? You know, how do I talk to this person? How do I relate to this person? The power dynamics have shifted and there've been a couple of nights I had to check my blood pressure in the middle of the night. Because I'm serious, it's like, what the hell is happening? Right? But the reality at the end of the day is, I've had to choose how I'm going to react. And am I going to say, "I'm going to manage this board and support this board and be a student and leader of this board in the same way that I have been?" Or do I figure out what the new reality is going to look like in the new paradigm and start adapting and shifting toward that? And that's when I made that conscious decision. Kathy, this morning, I happened to walk into the bookstore and she gave me a moment. I told somebody, I said, "I needed it so bad." They gave me a moment, I don't know if you even realized you did it. But she talked, she said, "How you doing?" I said, "You know what? I'm okay, I'm not complaining today." And she said, "That's so good." And she told me about this book she's reading, what's the theory?
It has to do with the Native, it has to do with the Native American myth and advice at twenty, when we turned into our new century. It is about staying in the middle of the river as opposed to holding on to the sides because we will drown and we will pull ourselves apart if we do not begin to understand the process of flowing through life, basically.
So, she just gave me a moment, y'all. Literally, walked into the bookstore, I said, "I'm walking in here." And you know, I don't know the questions before I walk in. I look fifteen minutes, I get here early, Beth and Chelsea, they show me and I look at them, I say, "Okay." And I thought, I said, "So, this is going to be my new mantra. How do I stay in the middle of the river and just keep on flowing?" Because I think there's a whole lot of opportunities, there's fear, there's anxiety, there's a tendency to hold on. And y'all know, few of you know, I don't swim. So, you know, when I get in the water, I am really trying to figure out how to hold on. But now I've started to realize that's for naught, is how do you flow? So, that's my goal.
Well, we've run out of time.
Oh, I talk too much, Dan, I'm sorry. Is there a quick question? Anybody last?
We have a quickie.
Okay, a quickie.
Okay, because it's a short question.
All right, mine seems to be short, though.
"What is your opinion of the newly created Ombuds position for the college?"
Excited about it. It was a recommendation that came from a group of folks, faculty, staff, and administrators who said, "We need this." What I understand, Sarah, who's in this room, who's only working part-time, has been busy. She's actually working overtime, I saw the other day, had to kind of say, "You've got some limits here." So, very active about that, excited because it was obviously filling the need and look forward to seeing some recommendations for it. Very good.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Pollard. And thank you to all of you here in the room and online for joining in on the conversation today. Our next Town Hall meeting is going to be in February of 2014. It's going to be the early part of the month. It's going to be on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. So, keep an eye on Inside MC Online and also the President's Corner Monday message for details about our next upcoming Town Hall. You can follow us at new.livestream.com/MontgomeryCollegeLive. You can go on there and check out all the information on upcoming Montgomery College Live web events. So, once again, for Dr. Pollard, everybody on the MCTV production crew, we want to thank you for participating in today's Town Hall.
Thank you. Thank you all, great audience.